Okay, it's seven o'clock, time to call this meeting to order. Everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the divine of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Smith, let's just inside take a prayer.
Kind Father, thank you for each person that you brought to this room today. Ask that you be with each of us as we consider the matters the city already is facing. Give us wisdom and compassion as we make decisions and help us to keep the interests of citizens of this town in a foremost as we make these considerations. Pray all these things in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Cool roll down.
Mr. Coman?
Here.
Mr. Summers?
Here.
Mr. Dingle?
Here.
Mr. Duffey?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Here.
Sonic?
Here.
All right, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the last regular meeting? Any council discussion on said minute? Motion to approve.
A second. Mr. Summers? Mr. Dingle? Yes. Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Okay. Auditor slash treasurer's report, six thousand fifteen for yours.
Nick, would you, oh, mind bringing it up or I won't be kind?
Thank you. Maybe?
Yeah, it's having some trouble.
Some trouble? Oh, there you go, okay. Oh, all right. Good evening, City Council. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm sorry I missed everybody last time. I had an appendectomy the night before, so I can say with confidence I'm at least five ounces lighter than the last time you saw me. And yes, it's been going just fine. I have three nice scars to show off. So, Mr. Mulane began his first day at a new job today, the city treasurer. If you guys don't know, he works in the tech sector, and the tech sector has been hurting very badly, including mass layoffs. So, job searching for him has been interesting for sure, but he was offered a very cool new job in tech finance, and his first day was today, so he was unable to make it. You can see his first report for January two thousand twenty-three, it's the paper copies in front of you guys. You'll see total funds as of month end, six point one five million with a new shiny CE investment certificate of deposit at Peoples Bank that the investment committee selected. On the next page, you'll see the interest rate at three point five percent, the highest rate the city's received since two thousand six. And, actually, you'll see the interest on the next report, but you'll see it's a very high amount. Then you will see Mr. Mulane's reconciliation of both the bank as well as the books. And I believe he highlighted, or at least he highlights for me, I'm not sure if he highlights all those words, but the difference between bank account, book accounts, excuse me, book balance at the very end of zero dollars, meaning the activity in the books in January, that's exactly the activity in the bank. And since we could not attend last time, or at least I could not, here is February two thousand twenty-three for the treasurer's report. You will see again the account balances. The certificate of deposit you'll see in the end of January, or excuse me, February earned a nice eight thousand nine hundred seventeen dollars and eighty-one cents, which is more than like the last five years combined in city interest. This is due to the feds raising the federal funds rate. And then almost eight thousand from the Peoples checking and money account, money market account as well. Or almost seventeen thousand in the first two months alone, which is seven thousand more than we thought we'd get for the whole year. So, we should send a thank you card to Mr. Jerome Powell, Chair of the Fed. Those funds will help abate inflationary costs for the city. And the bank reconciliation on the next page and book reconciliation, you'll find the difference between the banks and the books according to the treasurer, as well as myself is zero dollars. Both months were very smooth financially. That's the treasurer's reports for January, February two thousand twenty-three. On the city's website, on the city's website, you'll find the auditor's report for January and February, as well as on the screen here for everybody. And then it's on the website for posterity forever, so go ahead and find it if you're feeling up for some exciting stuff. So, the auditor's report for January, February two thousand twenty-three, you can see the revenues and expenses for each month laid out here. Oops, excuse me, sorry. Revenues for January, one point oh three million, expenses, one point six one nine. And then revenues, one point one in February, and almost half a million in expenses, sewer plant expenses. So, I put down here, these figures are much higher than normal monthly totals, much higher, due to the sewer plants that we are raising a breakneck speed to finish. If anyone doesn't know, especially the newer folks, the USDA, the EPA, Army Corps of Engineers, a whole number of agencies help administer this project, and then the funds must run through the city. Mr. Betts knows that, I didn't even see you sitting there, Mr. Betts, hello, knows that process very well. We can get checks like one, one and a half million dollars, and then they get dispersed after approval from a whole number of folks, including Mr. Betts, to those contractors who are doing the work. So, it can make our numbers look very big in these months. I also wrote here that January and February have the highest rate of expenses for the year. This is a number of reasons Mr. Dodson knows very well back here in the audience. We pay our insurances, we pay car building liability insurances, as well as the department started out with a shiny new budget. And so, high expenses, January, February, pretty typical for the city in the past. I have our combined fund balances here, as well as general fund, five hundred eighty-one thousand, combined streets funds, four hundred eighty-eight thousand, capital, two hundred eleven, and you can see water and sewer coming up together just over two million combined. That was the end of February. Same numbers, just the end of January. And, let's see. I've got just a slight delay, I'm done, okay, what do you think? Okay, here's our cash report, it's always a little tough to see on this, but it's sent to everybody's emails last week and in the forum a month ago. It's also on the website, but it just backs the numbers we just talked about, spending balances over January or February. Overall, city's finances, smooth sailing, January, February. You'll see the credit card report, required by state law to give you guys an overview, some of the credit card expenses and payments. We've had a lot of job openings, you'll see some Indeed postings there, as well as advertising costs, some training supplies, as well as, this was a pump or a Jenner pump? I wrote it down, but I can answer any questions for any of these, the books up in front of me. I didn't get a chance to at the last meeting, welcome Tracy, the new city manager, I would have done so a month ago, had I been here. And working with Tracy has been great, and she has been drinking from the fire hose, so they say. I wanted to briefly talk about the recent transition on January first, as council knows, since some of you voted for it, we transitioned to Rita Collection Agency, excuse me, Regional Income Tax Agency, income tax collections for the city of Nelsonville. Transition has been pretty smooth. We had a few kinks, but considering the desperate condition, income taxes had been in from two thousand five to two thousand nineteen, and many of the shortcomings that we had since two thousand nineteen, it's been nice. I filed my income taxes myself through Rita, I didn't pay anybody to do it, it took me about six minutes, though I only have a couple W-two's. But city taxes, pretty straightforward, W-two's in unless you're a business owner, and then income taxes out. And their online tax filing option, I found very convenient for helping folks with since January.
How frequently does Rita report?
Good question, they actually report daily, but we only get disbursements from them, actual money, twice a month, the first and the fifteenth.
First and, I'm sorry?
The fifteenth.
Thank you.
But I can get you, or anybody, updates from Rita on what was collected, and it's usually a few business days delays. So today's, I was like, Thursday and Friday. Besides that, that is the auditor's and treasurer's report, any question?
Yeah, I have a question, so, you know, there's been a lot of scrutiny and questions being raised regarding small to mid-sized banks. I think Peoples probably qualifies as a mid-sized bank. And so, my questions are two-part, like, one, how many different banking institutions does the city keep money in? And then the second one is, how have we communicated with leadership of any of those institutions to just ascertain, like, are they being responsible, like, what kinds of protections have they put in place for customers of our size? Has some due diligence been done around that? Can you comment on that?
There is some, I'm glad you asked that question, so, the bank, the crisis in the banking sector, and whether it's a crisis or not, I'm not really expert to say, I can say the city doesn't invest in companies, I'm gonna start big and come more detailfully. City doesn't invest in any companies, we can only invest in certificates of deposits or bonds, so the city was not exposed to any of the banking issues of the last month or so. Many of our pensions were, in fact, all of the pensions represented at the city of Nelsonville were exposed, it's two million. So, they have a different problem to deal with than us. Getting more specific to Peoples Bank, I have been watching Peoples Bank, their stock has dropped significantly. It was around, down, twenty percent down, but I believe it's come back up the last few days. I even did some research on their board and other folks, I wanted to see if there's anyone I could reach out to. The good thing for the city and its exposure is that state law requires banks to put up collateral dollar for dollar. So, if you put money into a bank, the bank's gonna take your money, lend it out, and you might be covered by the feds if you have less than a quarter million dollars, right? The city has a different arrangement. If we put and we have five to six million dollars in Peoples, Peoples is required to set aside the same amount, dollar for dollar, in investments that should Peoples experience anything significant to their business model or structure. That is set aside for the city. So, I know that might not sound great to other Peoples customers, but I'm very, very relieved, and I'm glad to know that the city actually is one of the folks first in line should something like Silicon Valley Bank ever take folks in. Of course, there's no such thing as zero risk, just like people say you can buy federal treasuries, they say there's zero risk, not really. The Fed could default, but it's as low risk as possible, the city's at the least risk of pretty much anyone in this room, I'd say.
And so, is Peoples the only institution that we bank with right now?
It is.
It might be worth it to consider in the future, you know, diversifying, you know, especially in the future, maybe if we are getting CDs, maybe we could get them elsewhere, something like that, but, okay.
So, we used to do that, they used to be, we used, our certificate of deposit investments used to be through Park National, and then our treasury would be at Peoples. I think one of the reasons they've fallen off, there's an investment committee, it's the auditor, treasurer, oh, that's not true, it's the city manager, treasurer, and the city law director. They actually make those final decisions, but I will say they usually just pick the best rate, and there's some law saying you kind of have to as well. You can make arguments, I think diversification is a good argument, it's kind of like not always taking the lowest bid.
Right.
It does a good reason not to. But Park has, Park National hasn't just not kept up the same as Peoples. I think that's kind of how it feels.
Got it, okay, thank you, that.
Yeah, that was one of the first things, we went, we talked to the state treasurer's office about it, we were like, okay, did there be any exposure, and there's not, as little as possible.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mike, Mr. Tappington?
Thank you.
Motion to approve the auditor's and treasurer's report.
So, move.
Second.
Ms. Dingle? Yes. Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to mayor's court report and roll call. We did about twenty-four hundred dollars in the last mayor's court with about eighty percent of the people showing up. The people that don't show up, we just refer those to municipal court, and they go from there, they receive assistance from there. So, we do not hold over anything, we just move it on down the line.
Is that something new that you're doing?
Yes, because what happens is, is we can't, the warrant issue in the state of Ohio is, as Bob, Mr. Quine will tell you, is with mayor's court is very tricky now, they've changed some rules. And the judges in that has frowned upon us putting out any kind of arrest warrant a lot of times. It's just easier to send them to municipal court, and there's less, less red tape.
So, are you sending out letters to advise these people?
To advise the people about what? Yes, they know their rights, they know they're gonna show up, and they're in trouble. So.
Thank you.
Do we charge a transfer fee when we only got them in municipal court?
I don't think we do. It just goes to court costs now.
It goes to court costs down there.
So, we don't. Which are more than ours.
Yeah, most of the people that, a lot of people that don't come, a lot of them make payment plans. A lot of the people aren't able to pay. All right. And with that, need to amend the agenda real quick here to do some appointments for the zoning board. Motion to amend the agenda to appoint a few of our citizens to the zoning board.
Someone? Second.
Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yeah.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Ms. Dingle? Yes.
Okay, the first motion is, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Kevin Dodson to the zoning board.
Second.
How many year term? There are five-year, four-year, three-year, two-year, one-year terms.
Four-year term? Yeah, I've never heard of the term, but anyway, yeah, four-year term.
I should still be alive then.
Yeah, Kevin, Kevin's like, I don't know. So, we'll do a four-year term.
No? Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Ms. Dingle? Yes. Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
A motion to appoint Cole Tolliver to the zoning board. Just a second, yeah? All right.
They're terming them all in?
All two a four-year term?
No, no, they're all, so, there's, there's five, there's five terms. It's five-year terms, four-year terms, they're all rotating. So, nobody has the same term line.
I think she too. I think she's.
Comes in charges.
Okay, so, what do we have left then, Mr. Sherman?
Well, you already, four-year, you have five-year, three-year, two-year, one-year.
We'll go for a three-year.
Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Man?
Yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Ms. Dingle?
Yes.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
All right, a motion to appoint Anthony Davis to a two-year term.
One second, man.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
I have a question, is Mr. Davis still on the funding commission?
This is not the Anthony.
Oh, okay, different, okay.
This is a different.
Thank you, yes.
Yes, okay, Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Ms. Dingle?
Yes.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
A motion to appoint Terry Kuhn to a one-year term.
One second, man.
Mr. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Man?
Yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Ms. Dingle?
Yes.
Mr. Hattie?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Motion to appoint Mark Hall Senior to a five-year term.
I'll second that.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Ms. Dingle?
Yes.
Mr. Hattie?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sonic?
Yes.
Okay, citizens' comments? I have anybody?
I have one.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Jane Flowers, one two two six Chestnut Street, Nelsonville. Speaker. Speaker. Okay, Jane Flowers, one two two six Chestnut Street. I have two questions, and the first one is, I live at the corner of Chestnut and Ryan Street, and there's a drain that runs in my lawn, storm drain. And it's been disconnected from the main, whatever, for probably three years or so. We've asked the city, my family, and all, but anyway, now, due to all the rain and stuff over the years, there's a very deep hole, and you don't notice that there's the cover there, but there's probably a four-foot hole, and I'm surprised somebody hasn't fallen into, actually. But my point is, it needs connected, it just needs to have that storm drain connected, because it also floods a lot. It brings you more heart, no, they did clean out the ditch behind me, and okay, but they didn't do the corner down on Chestnut Run. I was one concerned, and then I also wanted, I was here last, or I was here February twenty-seventh, inquiring about the mobile home that was set on the law, twelve zero eight. If there's anything progress in having getting it moved, it's still there. I thought it had thirty days.
Yes, it's sold, and they're in the process of getting all the paperwork transferred, so that they can get it moved. And it's supposed to get back to me tomorrow with a moving date.
Also, tomorrow, I'll do it now.
All right, that's one.
Thank you.
Do they have a, like, a parameter of time when it has to be moved? They had to get the application to where it's going, as well as get the title transferred, and then, once they have all that, then the movers will schedule that. But we haven't given them a date about when it needs to be on.
Okay, also, Mr. Cohen, if you would take a look at that drainage situation. There he is, he was right there behind it. All right, so, need department updates.
Well, I have a business comment, too.
Okay, go ahead.
This is a good one. No complaints. Joey, I'm in West Washington Street, I'd like to thank Neil Summers for the call in the meeting on Saturday to have people come and kind of have a forum. There weren't a lot of people there, but a lot went on. Betty Jo came, and she kind of gave an overview of the city and what's happening, which was really nice, because I always like to hear that. And people that were there were willing to help and learn and make this the community that they remember. And Chris Smith, and I've not met him before, he has to really stepped up to get the sports here, because he had to go to Trimble and Athens and all that, and now he's bringing the sports and doing his effort to contribute his time and other people's time and money to keep the sports in the Nelsonville area. Then the others that were there, they were concerned about transportation of youth to different events, and apparently, some of the events have transportation that will take them to the event. And they have no way home. That needs to be fixed, I have to figure that one out again. Okay. The general desire that came out for this was that Nelsonville is a community apart from Athens and has its own area, and neither one's bad or good, it's just Nelsonville likes to be considered a community, not part of Athens. And then there's a need to let people know the things that are available in the community. For example, I had no idea that the DFW, if you needed crunches, if you needed a wheelchair, if you needed a cane, they have it for you, and you know how much it costs? Zero. You might have to spend some money cleaning things up a little, and I know some people that have donated to it, I found out later, because I thought, and there are other things that are available. So, I'm working on figuring out how to present these things, so that we can find out maybe something to offer people, so that they know what's happening here and what's available. One of the other suggestions was that we have monthly meetings, and that, that will be determined on lots of different things, your time, and it's basically your, your choice on that, but the people that came were, were most happy and most generous with their time and effort, and it was a very diverse group that were willing to contribute to the Nelsonville community, and I commend you for thinking of that really great idea.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, moving on to department updates, who do we have tonight? Chief Barber, go ahead, you have the floor.
All right, well, since the last update, starting from some of the old businesses, we currently still have six, eight, ten, four, ten positions. We do have a scheduled test date on May seventeenth at five thirty PM, and that advertised, we had one out, we're gonna get a package picked up now. We're so partnered with Red Cross right now for smoke detector installs, again, we have to do it, take an assessment of the home, install the detectors, help take work ourselves, and then send us, send a paper to Red Cross, because this is actually part of the Red Cross program that we work with. Grants, I have three and five grants that are out, that have been submitted. We are still waiting on the FM Glitter Player Prevention Grant, that was gonna be for rugged outlets for EMS runs and fire runs. The BWC Exposure Grant was awarded, and that's gonna be for replacement hoods and gloves for the bunker gear, fire protection clothing that we wear. Another intervention grant through BWC, which was gonna be for one more extra case equipment, that one was awarded as well. Still waiting on the TransCanada TC Energy Grant, again, I root that one for help with the repair bill for end two thousand fifty-one, so if that is awarded, that would be twenty thousand dollars towards that repair, still waiting on that one. The club again needs four awards.
Came today?
Yeah, okay, I was gonna say, it'd probably be about another week.
Came today?
So, that was awarded. What that, what that grant does is, that grant allows us to spend money for its replacement, the AEDs that we currently have in the station. Those AEDs were discontinued by the company, and we have been trying to order peripherals, pads, and batteries, but there's devices over the past year with no, with no shipment of anything. So, we're changing out the AEDs that we use that are started. Training classes, last week, the twenty-third, was the first EBR and AED class we did for hot color police officers and some of the Nelsonville police officers. The next class that we have scheduled, fire department, gonna be the twenty-ninth, we should be able to get the rest of them recertified. Storm response, so this past weekend, we had quite the activity with high wind and a lot of rain. So, during the storm, our department responded to twelve emergency calls, of which three were medical emergencies. All the calls we responded to were overlapping calls, which means we had to respond to each call that happened at the same time, which was pretty taxing on the department. St. Ralph Seventy-Eight was shut down for approximately twelve hours while fire crews awaited AEDs arrival to remove lines from the roadway. Fire crews along with utility crews removed multiple trees from city streets. Uh, fire crews along with utility crews removed multiple trees from city streets. Our crew and air crew about to get around quite a few trees, removing those. Also, during events like this, some people might not think about this, Tracy and myself were having discussions that night. We have a lot of people in the community that might be dependent on oxygen generation machines. And when we have times of power outages for any amount of time, these individuals are the ones we have to go out and check on. There's no list countywide of residents that might have, uh, these, um, need, these special needs or concerns during a power outage. But working with the EMA's office, we were able to field any 911 calls that came into the office. The EMA director called me on my cellphone. And we coordinated with our crews to go out and do welfare checks, which worked out very well. Uh, we were, we're continuing even today to receive phone calls regarding down wires in the city. Uh, when handling these events, AEDs will triage events just like we do in the emergency service. So we'll actually, we'll, we'll tier the rating of calls. And we'll handle the calls appropriately that way. AED does the same thing. Some of the calls I received today were people have said that they had a tree that was down blocking their driveway. Or they still had some lines down in their yard. And guess what happens? AED will show up, they will neutralize that circuit, isolate that circuit, make sure that harm is not there anymore, that, and they do want the next call. So right now, what we're seeing in town with some areas, there still might be a line laying there in the yard. But AED, and I've contacted them through our emergency contact numbers, they went out neutralizing the systems, they're going to come back when they're done, and they'll pick up that.
Is there any way they could like put a tag on it or something?
Um.
Or would it, I don't know.
It's how, whatever their policies are.
Yeah, okay.
What, the point that I just want to make is Nelsonville crews will not move, remove power lines from trees or roadways. It's a liability, it's a risk, the fire service doesn't leave line. I guarantee utility guys are going to be line tired. Uh, if there's a tree in somebody's yard, if we're there performing a rescue, we will cut the trees if we need to, to, to make that rescue efficient and safe. But the city does not go out and just cut trees that are on people's private property just to clear their property. I just wanted to clear that up, because we have received a lot of those phone calls today. So those are a lot of these little metaphors for fires I've had to put out today with, with people calling because of the storm. And I had, uh, I went individual, um, that, and they're moving the line on their own. What I want to say is, the, the way we operate on, in the field, we don't do anything until AED tells us that this is it. Okay? I don't, if anybody in, that's listening to this meeting has a line in their yard, do not touch the line, do not move the line, when that, when that 911 will come out, we'll check it out and we'll make you perfect calls. Well done.
Chief, excuse me.
Yeah.
How many grants have you, uh, written this, this time?
Uh, this year?
No, just this period in here. You've been talking about the five.
I think I've got five submitted since day number one.
I personally would like to thank you for doing these grants, because I know that brings in a lot of money for you guys.
It helps.
And I appreciate it so much. And I hope the rest of the council will agree with me on that.
All right, run it in the department.
Uh, thank you, Chief. Do you, uh, you used the term mercy call. I, I don't know what that means. Can you tell me what, what a mercy call is?
I'm sorry, emergency.
Emergency call, okay. Tell me if it's good or bad. They put you out of your misery.
I would add too, with the AED, there, if you have a smartphone, they have an app. And that is the fastest, easiest way to report something at your particular location, because it links to your bill. And so they can pinpoint you and give you specific updates for your location, as well as the whole map area too.
I, I would like to add one little thing to that. Because of the number, and I tried to do that, it's not as prompt as it is when there's not this much going on. So, you know, if you don't get it immediately, they're still working on it. And that's important to know.
Anything else?
Thank you, Chief.
Who else do we have tonight? Mr. Cohen, Mr. Cohen, Florida?
Yeah, I want to start off the way Harry said. Appreciate the Fire Department, the Police Department. Saturday was a really unique situation for us. The whole zip code was out of power. We had a lot of things going on at one time, like Harry said. They had runs, we had every stoplight in town went down same time, sewer plant was down. And we, we had a lot, everybody had a lot of things going on. Everybody worked together to make sure everything was covered and taken care of. So, thank you, thank you. Um, on from that, the sweeper has been out a couple times. Um, we had the company come in town. We had a class, went over everything, what to check, how to adjust. Um, why they were adjusting, the death fluid light came on, and the only way to do it, we had to take it and have it shut off. So it was back in the shop for a couple days. We got that back now. It'll be out tomorrow and Thursday, Wednesday, because there's no rain. So, um, we done another 12-ton coal patch. I'm not getting any more coal patch. The, uh, sewer, or the asphalt plant opens next Monday. So I'm not going to mess with any more coal patch when we get a hot patch next week. Next, next Thursday, the sixth, Phase 3 water goes out for booting. So that, that'll be going out, and hopefully starting in early fall. And that's replacing everything on Franklin Court, pleasant view on all the mains up to there. Um, I've got a couple calls in for state bids. I'm waiting on quotes for a new tractor and a dump truck. We, uh, put the money aside last year to go get those this year. We're a tractor than what we have, so we dig deeper. So I'm waiting on the quotes back for that. And we've had six weeks since the last meeting. It's been fairly quiet with these. Not that I'm going to say that out loud.
Yeah, that's one of that.
Yeah, I don't want to say that out loud.
Do you think that's due to the other line being turned back on? Equalizing the pressure, maybe a little bit?
Maybe a little bit. We're lucky we didn't blow more lines when that was turned back on at the same time, with.
Put more pressure on the lines?
Put more pressure back in it, so.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I do. Um, is most or all of your equipment under a roof?
Yeah. Everything right now except for our booting line.
Okay.
Everything's under roof.
Great. That's all I have.
Is the street sweeper too small? Is that, is that really what the problem is? I mean, this, let's just.
I'm gonna tell you, I talked to the salesman, we had a lengthed conversation last week about that. And he said, the city of Lima, which is quite a bit bigger than Nelsonville, has the exact same.
So it's not that? It was just a failure? It was, it was, it was a mode of failure?
Yeah, um, one of the water pumps on it right now is a little weak. He got me a quote for one, and then he turned around and told me our best bet is to go to Tractor Supply. They sell the same thing, the Tractor Supply, for about a hundred bucks. And it's quite a fraction of what a new one costs.
Good.
Will be up. So it, it's working the way it is, just one of the pumps is a little. So just got to replace that pump. He said they don't have a living problem, there isn't a line. And it's very enough that you can hold it.
Okay. Anybody else have questions from Chicago? Thank you, sir. Okay, uh, motion to amend the agenda to add ordinance, uh, 16 dash 23.
Don't move. Second.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Ms. Tingle?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Ms. Command?
Yes.
Ms. Summer?
Yes.
All right, ordinance 14 dash 23, and someone introduce it, please?
No. I mean, you have to tell me what to do with this. They tabled it?
Why are we tabled?
Because of the, because of the, yeah, like.
Language, and there's no about there.
There was, yeah, and there was no, no, because, um, it is to opt in. And we have an estimate, it's an estimated amount. And it depends on the total number of people who end up opting in as to what the final amounts will be.
So we just need to opt in?
So we just have to opt in.
Okay.
Do you?
It has nothing to do with, it, we had, it's just saying we have to opt in. So we tabled it, we're going to take a motion to take it off the table.
Do you, do you want to leave in the portion of if not all? Do you want to take the if not all out? And, I mean, I know it doesn't really.
If we don't use it all on, if we don't put it up, what are we going to do with the other part? It should be all of it, though, then, yeah.
Just to go and get in, like, I'm sorry.
This is just to get in.
Just, just.
This is just to opt into the.
Once we get the money, then we can, then we can.
Okay. And it's, and it depends on the final settlement, so how many people opt in and how they do it. Anywhere from six to 10 years. Each one has, each company involved has its own settlement.
Yep.
So it's.
We definitely want to.
But we, but it's money to come to us. Okay, so we opt in this, to this program.
And we get the money, and then we.
Then we regress another one that says all of the money will go into the K9.
In the amount, yes.
In the amount.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll make this a second. Because we got a lot.
Okay, and we got to take it off the table, so.
Yeah, take it off.
Make a motion to take it off the table.
On table. I'll second that motion.
Uh, Ms. Tingle?
Sure.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yeah.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
We should label it the ordinance that will never die. For at least 10 years.
There you go. So this is, let's take a reading.
An ordinance authorizing the city auditor to place a portion, if not all, of national opioid settlement agreement money in the K9 by declaring an emergency.
Any council discussion? Motion to adopt.
Don't move. Second.
Now, Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
I still say the word is off a little bit on the, on the.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah.
Ms. Sonic? Mr. Command?
Yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Ms. Tingle?
Yes.
Okay, all right, ordinance 15 dash 23. Need someone to introduce it, please?
I will.
An ordinance approving wastewater treatment plant Phase 2 Change Order 6 for the Nelsonville Regional Collection System Project and declaring emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville has entered into a contract based to wastewater treatment plant. Whereas additional changes to the contract are recommended in order to complete the contract. Whereas this will be Change Order 6 for this project. Whereas the purpose of this change order is to replace the old four-inch water line along the front of the project site with 760 feet of new six-inch line, install two new fire hydrants, and modify the storm sewer. Whereas this change will extend the contract completion time by 60 days. Whereas the change will increase the contract price by $337,802.64 and is summarized as attached in Exhibit 1. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. The city of Nelsonville hereby approves Change Order 6 for the Phase 2 wastewater treatment plant contract as described in Exhibit 1, attached here too and incorporated into this ordinance as if we went, rewet, rewritten, fully within G. The contract price will be increased by a sum of $337,802.64. The change order is to replace the old four-inch water line along the front of the project site with 760 feet of new six-inch line, install two new fire hydrants, and modify the storm sewer. Kirk Brothers Change Order Request Number 16, revised 1. In turn, the city manager Tracy Bowe shall have the authority to enter into, accept and/or authorize the contract Change Order 6 for Phase 2 wastewater treatment plant contract as shown in Exhibit 1. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to ORC 731.30, Article 4, Sections 4.09 through 4.11, as an emergency in the operation of the city government and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full course and effective upon its adoption, duly enacted by council and approved reading under suspension of the rules the 27th day of March 2022.
Okay, any council discussion on said matter?
Michael, is that four-inch change one, was it just because it's a bad pipe or just on the volume?
There's a couple different reasons. The main reason it's in, it's not located properly on the plant, so, you know, we didn't know exactly where it was. It conflicts with the new storm sewer along the front, so we got to move a portion of it anyway. Secondly, where, um, a portion, a portion of it is located, we're building a new parking lot on top of it. And, you know, the thought is, let's get that old stuff out there and get a new line completely in the same there. So it takes care of everything along the front.
Is that six-inch running into old four-inch?
No, it, it, that ends right there past the plant. And, um, Shet Car Company and the radio station are fed off of it with a couple service lines. So it's the end of it. It is fed by four-inch from the city. Um, the thought is, uh, if that's ever upgraded, you'd want to upgrade it to a six and to put hydrants on it, technically maybe to be a six for the rules. Uh, I, I would add real quick, and it's a lot of money, just to give you context. Um, there's 10% contingency in the project, about 1.6 million. This brings us, uh, a little over, just about half a million before. I'd have to do the math and exact number, but I figured it out before we came. We're at 3% of that right now, so we're doing pretty good at being 80% in. Um, we've got 10 set aside, I'd like to be five if I can every time, so we're still happy with where we're at. So. And, um, it's fully funded through the USDA funding. Um, um, the way their funding works, they do their grant loan ratio based on affordability. And they make you spend your loan first, so everything at the end is your grant. So this is full grant funded for the project.
Okay, anyone else? All right, thank you, Mr. Reps. Uh, motion to suspend.
Don't move.
Second. Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Six?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Ms. Tingle?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Don't move.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Ms. Tingle? Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
All right. And the ordinance 16 dash 23, need someone to introduce it, please?
I will.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to apply for, accept, and enter into an Ohio EPA water supply revolving loan account agreement on behalf of the city of Nelsonville for construction of the Phase 2 Water System Improvement Project and designating, designating a dedicated repayment source for loan financing and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville seeks to construct the 2022 Water System Improvement Project. And whereas the city of Nelsonville intends to apply for Ohio EPA Water Supply Revolving Loan Account loan and principal forgiveness financing for the project. And whereas the Ohio EPA requires the government authorities to pass legislation to apply for loan and principal forgiveness financing and the execution of the agreement, as well as designating a dedicated repayment source for loan finance. Whereas the city is set to receive $2,759,300 in principal forgiveness, or grant, and $2,759,300 in a 0% interest loan for Phase 2 Water Project. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Ohio. It is necessary to complete the Phase 2 Water Systems Improvement Project for the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the city of Nelsonville. It is necessary to apply for construction financing It is necessary to apply for construction financing from the Ohio EPA Water Supply Revolving Loan Account. Whereas the city is set to receive $2,759,300 in principal forgiveness and $2,759,300 in a 0% loan for phase two water project. The city manager of the city EPA Water Supply Revolving Loan Account, the financier required to complete the construction of the project. The method of repayment of construction financing from the Ohio EPA Water Supply Revolving Loan Account shall be wire revenues generated from Nelsonville Water Customer. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Ohio Revised Code seven thirty one point thirty, article four, sections four point zero nine through four point one one as an emergency in the operation of the city government and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Duly enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules the 27th day of March, 2023.
Any council discussion on said matter? Mr. Reps, if you could, what is this for?
This is for the phase two water project. Bids are opening next week, as Jason mentioned. And the water lines being replaced were identified as the next critical need includes all of Franklin down to Fort, up Fort, Positview and all the way to the existing line on Wood Lane Drive, which will essentially provide a loop system with dual feed to the school campus and Bookdole. They will come together there at Sylvania Avenue of Wood Lane, but that gets us past a lot of the areas where they've had problems before. Which are also lines that are being replaced along Boulevard. Essentially from a little subdivision there up to Sylvania Avenue that's been a problem spot for the city for years. The project also includes the installation of TTHM treatment equipment and the tanks and clear wells or sprayers and exhaust blowers that'll help the city control that. It's funded half grant and half loan. We applied for this project and Chief Barber wrote a letter talking about how fire department flushes the points to schools that don't have to dismiss so often due to the frequency of breaks. And we were still like ninth out of 12th in the competition to get that money, so it was a, we were really happy with that. Just a little context moving forward, once we have bids, hopefully we get good bids the first time and I know the contractor in town's looking at it really hard, so maybe done a good job for us, so I'd like to see them get it. Once they do that, I'll come back to council with a recommendation for a bid. Uh, hopefully a recommended bid and the council will have to accept that tentative upon the final funding award, so this isn't the, the last time you'll see on this issue. You'll have that chance to ward it. This just authorizes us to apply.
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay, question for you, are you, uh, are we going line for line or are we upgrading any of the lines with bigger lines or?
We are upgrading some of the lines. That line all the way out will be eight inch. You know, I shouldn't mention it also includes short and the Conner and Mound Street. You know, those are six inch lines will be replaced in those areas. So, um, you know, I, I think Franklin may be the, the area that's upgraded, but for the most part, it's line for line. But it'll of course all be new. The service lines will go from the main to the meter pit, so you've got everything on the city side is new in the areas. And I should add, um, one of the great parts. We applied for OPW C funding last year in the fall. Uh, they awarded it to us back in February, we went to the committee meeting down there. We got some points from the local district. Bottom line, we found out we've got over 600,000 to add to the project, we used the water project as a match. 400 of that is grant and two something loan there. We're gonna pave every street we disturb as part of this project, full width, new pavement, mill it all up, pave it down. Um, there's a couple that'll go on top versus the milling, but that's such an added benefit.
Yeah, absolutely.
Now, you'll remember this, let me caveat one little area, Boulevard uh, that we're gonna work on near the Speedway. We're gonna pay that with small cities funding, so we're not gonna pay if it's, it's gonna get taken care of that.
Okay.
So this is West Franklin, right?
Yes, from Fort Street all the way to uh, the water line begins by the old school facility.
Oh, you know, East Franklin's only gets much more. I'm just, just saying, just saying.
There's 13 houses there, I just sat here and counted them and it stops right at West Franklin where you cross over Fort Street. You're gonna do the upper part of Conner, Short and Mill, I mean, you're just, you're, you're missing this. I don't know if there's other reasons for that, but.
It was, I think it was the worst water lines, correct?
That's right, I sat down with city staff and they said if I can replace any, here's my list and I'm.
Why you got potholes at my ankles?
Regarding the water supply revolving loan account program, what is the acceptance rate of, you know, if we apply, are we relatively certain that we're gonna obtain these funds?
Yes, yes, it's, it's pretty, uh, as, as Taylor said, nothing's guaranteed, but the track record is unless you've got some financial issues that show you cannot repay the loan and it's automatically awarded. It's funded through the Ohio Water Development Authority, which was established for this very reason, to help communities complete these projects.
Any more questions?
Um, what would it cost to pave that little area of East Franklin that they're talking about? Roughly, I, I don't know all square footage, what they're talking about, how big that area is.
I can tell you this furniture out here with this new gate is 10,000 dollars.
Is that concrete or black?
It's black top. Six inches, couple spots are gonna be a little bit.
I was just wondering if that could be a side bed on that bed. You know, like, this is B A, if you wanted to add this, it would be B.
See, that's what I plan on doing on Monroe Street. When, when they pay for the sewer, they're stopping it fat, so I'm gonna get a quote on doing fat to Quandos. Because then all of Monroe Street will be.
It, it does make sense if it's not that big of an area and they already have all the equipment, then we're not paying an extra hauling fee, we're not paying all that extra to move all the equipment.
But that's something we can look into, because that would be 24 before we even pay.
Yeah, and we can, I mean, I can look into it a little bit, so help me understand correctly, it's from Fort, does that run into Jefferson, are you talking about?
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
It runs into Jefferson.
Okay, I can look at it and see if there's something.
Yeah, I'm just thinking if it's not that big of an area and they're already there, what's it gonna cost? Yeah, especially if it's already in bad shape versus waiting and then paying them.
Time for us to do it anyway, if they're hauled in to the contractor, we don't have to pay the haul to get it out.
Thank you.
As long as we're certain, a year later, we're not coming through and replacing the line and just wasting money on.
Yeah. Excellent point.
We can check that out. That's on 422. Is that already seen? Road repair done.
Don't wait to dig it up and put it in.
Take off six months, three year later. Makes sense.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Motion to suspend the rules.
So moved. Secondary.
Sonnen?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yeah.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Ms. Tingle?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. I was waiting on Nick.
Mr. Coleman? Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Summers? Ms. Tingle?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Sonnen?
Yes.
And on behalf of that, we are to the city manager's report.
All right, so I just wanna recognize Jason, well, uh, Police Chief, Fire Chief for Saturday's coordination, it was really well handled and we were able to get a lot done Saturday in Midark, so that was quite a challenge. The pool leak repairs, well, uh, we're looking at starting notes next week to get the leak fixed at the pool. Uh, and this week is the deadline for the job applicants for the pool manager and we've got a good sized pool of lifeguard applicants as well. Police Department and I are working with the Nelsonville York City Schools for a new MOU to continue the school resource officer for next school year, they've really been very appreciative and it's been very beneficial to have a resource officer in the school. So we're working on that new MOU with the, with the school. We're, have been in talks with other cities and areas within the region for collaborative regional grants such as Arts Council, some additional Appalachian uh, community grants and others, so lots of collaboration going on out there for the whole region. There's a meeting even tomorrow to talk about whether to extend the bike path farther from Athens all the way up into Logan. So lots of different collaborative ideas being thrown around out there for the next, for the rest of this year and next year for grant ideas. And I'm gonna steal the police chief's thunder here of, uh, we got final word about the new K9 dog. It's not trainable enough after his evaluation, so we'll have to look at another dog. That will be, so we're working on that process. Also want to let everyone know that the weeds binds grass code for public nuisance goes into effect April 1st through October 31st, so eight inch or higher. Here's calls for a notice of violation, which is section 91.01, so that notification will be going out by the end of the week to let the public know about that. And then related to the water project, uh, because we have so many new council members, the one piece to that is we have to have, council has to do an online training. So I'll be sending that information out to all of you to make sure that everybody gets that online training so that they'll stay eligible for that grant project. And, um, we are looking at enhancements for the text my gov app that's on our website, so that will hopefully improve the, and enhance the customer service of that app being on the website and people being able to get question, questions answered or submit information to us through the website and through that app.
Okay, all right. Any questions for Tracy?
I got a question. The text my gov, does it still go to the code enforcement officer or does it go to you? We have a code violation.
So both of us are on that now.
Two things, so now that we have a, um, Board of Zoning Appeals, thank you so much. We discussed, I, uh, we discussed a little bit that it seemed like the best way for them, for a citizen to reach out to the Board of Zoning Appeals if they want to make an appeal would be to contact the city manager, is that right? But you weren't here when we talked about that, so I wanted to make sure that that sounds good to you and sounds good to everyone.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Okay, so if you wanna get in touch with the Board of Zoning Appeals, you reach the city manager's office.
Well, you have to be aware, they're gonna contact them anyway.
Sure, yeah, but that way, that, I think that the, the idea was that the Board of Zoning Appeals wouldn't have to have their contact information posted. Um, and then the other thing, uh, oh, so you know, you mentioned the weed nuisance law, is there, and, and this is sort of a question for you, but maybe somebody in the room knows. Well, are there resources available for people who are maybe elderly or unable to like take care of their lawn?
I volunteered the last three years to take care of it. I've never received a call.
Okay, well, there you go.
I'll call you this year. Good. All right. Uh, Mr. Smith? Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a question, where, um, do you stand on the HR policy?
So I am working on getting additional quotes to just have some comparison as to who we go with for that, uh, because it is a pretty extensive project, so we wanna make sure that we both have people that are qualified as well as have a reasonable pricing for that. It never got beyond the contract negotiation before I was here, so. So I touched base with, uh, the one consultant that had been contacted and she's updated her her, um, basically her negotiation for what she wanted to do and thought we'd never done, and so getting some other, some other comparison.
Any idea on the timeline for that?
I just talked with one today and she's supposed to have some pricing hopefully by the end of the week. I need to, you know.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what he asked you.
So, so prior to me being here, um, the prior city manager was working with a consulting company to try and have some HR services handled.
Okay.
And so, um, and that was one of the things that kind of got dropped in all the transitions and so, um, so I found that information and talked with that consultant and so she updated her kind of bid offer that she was willing to do and then uh, because it was only the one person I wanted to get to find out if there were some other consultants available to give comparable pricing.
What is she going to do that hasn't ever been, ever asked?
So it is a whole, uh, extensive project, so it is looking at personnel policies, it's looking at our hiring practices, it's looking at our position descriptions, it's looking at um, the application processes, it's looking at, um, uh, what else is in there? All of our policies and training as well, any kind of required HR training, reviewing our personnel files to make sure that what's supposed to be in there is in there and what's not supposed to be in there is not in there. It's, it's a, it's a pretty long laundry list of.
So that was never done before?
No.
It's, this to bring us up to pretty much a standard, equal standard.
Making sure things are consistent across the board and everything that we're legally required to do, we're doing. It can be a full time job by itself.
Any more questions? Thank you, Tracy. All right, um, go to the order, Mr. Coleman.
Yeah, I'd like to start with, um, thank you to the first responders for your assistance by speaking. Uh, second, thank you to the zoning board people that were appointed. Thank you for stepping up to that. This is not gonna be a popular one, but good luck to my Iowa women's basketball team making the final four.
There you go.
That's all I have.
Play at nine o'clock, guys.
All right, we'll, we'll try to be there. Uh, Mr. Summers?
Yes, um, I've, I've got kind of a question. I got on our city, uh, webpage and it has about us Nelsonville, Ohio. But what I don't see is what's our mission and what's our vision? And if you go through town and, and talk to folks, you hear a lot of different opinions on that. But I'd kind of like to challenge us in this room to kind of come up with what is our mission and what is our vision for Nelsonville? What are we? It's kind of hard to get everybody moving in one direction if we don't know what that direction is.
Yeah, that would be part of the strategic plan.
That's all I have, just go to the order. Ms. Tingle?
Just thanks for getting my electricity back on as fast as they did and for all the hard work fire, police and everybody did to get things back to semi-normal as normal as Nelsonville ever gets, so I do appreciate it.
I think, I think for all the first responders, it seemed like there was a never ending array of sirens over the weekend. And you know, when you hear that, it always kind of holds your breath a little bit. Cause it, you know, you just pray it's not something horribly wrong, so. Um, also I'd like to thank the, uh, the sewer and the street guys with the generators at the sewer plant, at the water plant, we didn't have any poo back up and just to add water. So, um, thank you to all of our city employees for a great job.
Can I, a quick thing? If anybody in Nelsonville found the page of a play script floating around after Saturday, um, it's because the 15 copies of the 75 page play script were left on my front porch on Saturday morning. And when I come home Saturday afternoon, they were all over.
I talked up about 150 of them and shoved them in like a garbage.
So my abject apology. My abject apology to everybody who wound up with a copy of it, but it's a good play.
They're all in history.
And one last thing before I, also would like to thank Betty Jo and I tasked her with finding the zoning board and finding people that would be willing to do that. And of course, like always, she came through.
It's very timely, thank you.
Yeah. And also, that's it, Mr. Sherman?
I'm fine.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah.
Nick Smith?
I wanted to share a quick word about, uh, there's been some conversation in the city around the issue of homelessness. And, um, it's a really complicated issue, um, not one that we can possibly unpack in just a couple minute statement, but I just wanted to, sometimes I see online or in general conversation a really disparaging kind of tone about people in our community who are in this situation. And I just wanna urge people to, to second guess that instinct and kind of push back on that impul- Um, and I just want to urge people to to second guess that instinct and kind of push back on that impulse. Um, there are still people living in our community and um, the issues that have led to them being in this place are complex and difficult to unpack. And uh, we're not gonna fix it overnight, but I just want to encourage people online, at home, in person to just talk respectfully about our neighbors regardless of their situation.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
When I came to the meeting last month and asked about the tents that had been, that was not an insult.
Oh, no.
I was trying to, you know, we're getting a trailer, we're not, we don't need, we're getting all these i- items and I thought, what are we doing?
I'm not, I'm not, my call is not directed to you whatsoever, I promise.
Okay, well, I apologize if I said something to anyone that.
No, no. Betty Jo, you were fine, I'm mostly responding to things I've seen online.
Online.
So no, you're great, uh, and it was not uh, pointed at any person, just a general like, for all of us, I can do better too, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
In response, um, I saw in a newspaper article that Nelsonville was gonna do something about the homeless. Are we going to be liable for these homeless people? When something happens to them and we are involved in taking care of them?
That would be a legal issue that we can.
Exactly, that's that's what I'm saying is you've got to be careful about what they put in the newspapers letting Nelsonville believe that, you know, we're gonna take care of all the homeless people.
What newspaper or?
Uh, Athens Plaza.
I don't write for them anymore.
I'm like, no, I'm not.
They might call me up and ask questions.
My knowledge, there's no official city program.
Let me clear the air.
That's funny. Good to be order, um. I'd like to get the finance committee together, but Dan brought up something that it has to go through someone else before it gets out.
Yeah.
Oh, so yeah, so you typically, when you want to, you're talking like the races, it goes to that committee and then from there it goes to the finance and then the council, is how it typically works, you guys can do it any way you want.
Yeah, that's how it goes, it goes through the committee that the person works for and then it goes through.
And the finance and then the answer then.
Okay, now, when you say the committee that the person works.
So police and fire, police and fire goes to police and fire committee. Street, the street committee or utilities committee.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, motion to go in executive session, ORC one twenty-one dash twenty-two for personnel legal hours. Inviting in, inviting in Tracy, Taylor, and Bob at different times. Bob toy the whole time. The whole time. You're ready for a whole making motion. Okay.
Next second.
Seconds, we've already. All right, motion to come out of executive session, I'll call the roll. Um, Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Mr. Summers.
Yes.
Ms. Tingle.
Yes.
Mr. Sherman.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Nancy.
Yes.
All right, um, I here have a letter of intent uh, to Margaret Nukin, Nukin? Say the last name.
Wen, I would.
Wen.
I would think.
Okay.
Wen, I think.
Um, of one fifty-three East Columbus Street, she is, she has expressed interest into the open position on civil service. I hereby appoint her for, I need a nomination to appoint her.
So moved.
One second, all right. Mr. Summers.
Uh, yes.
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 Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Nancy, okay, all right, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Tingle.
Yes.
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 Mr. Smith.
Yep.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Mr. Summers.
Yes.
All right.